Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Before we get started, if everyone would rise and join me to the board meeting. And actually, before we sit down, I would just like to take a moment while everyone is standing. And I'd like for us to take a moment of silence for the reasons that Paul Hesey Jr. as well as Chance Holden. Paul Hesey in particular was a huge steward in the Southport community. Anytime this town needed help, he stepped up. He stood on a town council, the planning board, he's a coach at Empire. Served on the sewer board, cemetery board, as well as really helped out our public works department. Additionally, Chance Holden was a beloved member of our community. We've recently bought last both, and I'd just like to take a moment of silence for both of them. Thank you. All right, welcome to our September 2025 town council meeting. Our first order of business will be to approve the minutes from our Board of Excessors meeting on August 25th, 2025. I was not present for this meeting. Does anyone who was have any edits to the minutes?
Chair, who we accept the Board of Excessors minutes of the March 1st, 25th as written.
Second, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I will abstain. Motion passive, three zero with one attention. Three with one attention again. Next, our town council meeting from August 26th, 2025. Anyone have the edits to those minutes?
I have just one quick bit. Under Councilor comments, where it's, well, it's Foxdale. It says apologies for having a discussion. It should read apologies for not a discussion on the town council minutes. Now we're a lot of, pretty much, oh, we need, it's. There. Just a third line.
Any other edits? All right, I'll make a motion to adopt our town council meeting minutes of May 26th, 25th as amended.
Sure.
All those in favor say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I will abstain. Motion passive, three with one attention. All right, next item of business is signing our treasurer's warrants. We are now complete on FY '25 with all of our heart. That's correct, right? So now we are moving forward, we will just be signing treasurer's warrants for this year 2026. I'll make a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated September 4th, 2025, and the amount of $1,303,943 and 57 months.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the warrants?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, there was talk of there would be a debit. Do you guys remember that conversation?
For the void check.
Yeah, yeah. Is that on here or not on here?
It would be a separate report. I can include those in the future if I just.
I just was looking for the negative and then I didn't see it, so I just want to ask, so thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melinda?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I, motion passes for you. Our first item of business is, we have a important presentation, or rather, more of an informational only report regarding CMP station plans on Wadley Lane. I'm going to ask Tim to kind of share with us what we got, and I will have some color as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair, member of town council. This is just an update that we received, so I'll pass it on to you for information. Remind you that the council has no statutory authority over the CMP project, but this, we received this in my office through a meeting with CMP. A few slides that it had showed the project overview, the project needs, project benefits, the project scope, and so forth, and a projected timeline, and an outreach number. So I just wanted to make sure that I shared that information with the council. So you're informed and know what I know.
Thank you, Tim. So for those of you, just to keep everyone up to date. For a moment, we were planning on having a full presentation from CMP at this meeting this evening. But in lieu of the presentation that I heard last Friday, that I know many of you were at last Friday, we opted to just kind of formally share this presentation with the council. As Tim mentioned, the council doesn't have any statutory authority over this issue at this moment in time, resides with the planning board. We have a responsibility to be informed and keep the community informed on how things are progressing with this item. I would like to share, I did attend the presentation on Friday evening from CMP. It's held here last Friday at 5:00 p.m. And there were several members of the CMP project present. And they presented pretty much all of these same slides that Tim has now shared with us, and they're part of the public documents. With the exception of the map, there is a detailed map included in this presentation that was shared with the council that was not shared on Friday evening, which I I think is unfortunate. I would just, I just would like to share like my experience attending that as a resident. I attended that as a resident. I, there were, there was a good turnout. There were a decent number of people here. Everyone in the room from the community was not in favor, it seemed, of the Wadley Lane location. And then lots of questions for CMP, particularly around the reason why Wadley Lane was the chosen location. When pressed with, when CMP was pressed with questions like, you know, why couldn't we consider it a industrial corridor? My opinion, again, I'm speaking as one individual, I felt that responses to that were inadequate. The answer to the question of why couldn't we do this in the industrial zone is not, oh, well, because Wadley Lane is so great. I think that we need some more substantive responses as to why the industrial corridor couldn't be considered. I also felt their presentation was really inadequate from a presenting, from a visuals perspective. I think the same holds true for this presentation that was shared this evening. Tim, could you pull it up for a second? There's one particular slide where there's a picture of a field. It's really all of a play. And I.
Plan.
Not know of a couple more. One. So this is the image that was shared in the CMP presentation last week, which I don't know, for people who live close to the area, it's probably is more meaningful, but certainly for me, who does not live in the area, this is not a meaningful picture to understand where the substation is going to reside. And nor was the presentation itself. I really, and I expressed this in the meeting, so it's not news to CMP or to the community hopefully, but I do really feel like the input to do a lot more to help the public understand what this is going to look like. And I think they need to do a lot more to help us understand why Wadley Lane and why not the industrial, why the industrial corridor couldn't be considered. So that's just my two cents is having, or I'm sorry, having participated or joined the meeting. I imagine there's a few of you here because of, here for this agenda item this evening, and I want to give you all an opportunity to speak if you would like to. Council, any questions or comments or anything you all want to add before I open it up to the floor for the public?
I just want to have an unfriendly reminder of, right now, this is business in front of the planning board. And of course, the town. And of course, the town council is considerate and wants to hear from the people. But right now, there's nothing that we can do for you guys as a board. And it would probably be a better action to reach out as well to your planning board and the, the higher powers that be, and, and especially reach out directly to the phone number that was given on, on the supporting document to CMV with comments, concerns, complaints, and criticisms to them, because those need to get to the right people, and at this stage in the process, the council is not the right people.
Thank you. That said, I am going to give everyone an opportunity. If there is something you would like to speak about pertaining to the CMP item, I'm happy to take those comments at this point if anyone would like to.
Yeah, we're starting. Hour nineteen Hill Drive. It, it keeps sounding like this project is going forward regardless. Is there any glimmer of hope that the planning board will decide it's a no?
Again, because it resides in the planning board, that's not anything that this body can, can speak to. We're not the decision makers.
Are they the decision makers, or do they report to you guys?
They report to us, but we, we are not able to say. What am I, how do I want to put this? We can't hold them to a particular decision. They have to act as a body and make decisions on their own as a body. And if there is an issue with how the planning board is operating, and they are doing something untoward, or something they shouldn't be doing, that's the council's responsibility to step in. But as far as evaluating our ordinances of whether something is in line with our ordinances or not, that is ultimately the planning board's decision.
How about the comprehensive plan in line with the comprehensive plan? Would that be council or would that be planning board?
The comprehensive plan definitely works out.
Okay. So, to that end, in our comprehensive plan, we, we want to have green space and lots of, you know, outdoor use and conservation, so that needs to be considered by whomever, whichever body needs to consider it.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else on that CMP Wadley Lane substitution?
David McDermott, been a long road. No, I just want to agree with you, Mallory, that the presentation Friday was totally inadequate. And every question from the public was basically just referred, and a lot of assurances were made by people who really don't run that international corporation. And, you know, it's going to be a quarter acre site, and don't worry about the future. It is just totally inadequate. And I know it's before the planning board, but the ordinances are approved and passed by the council. And if the planning board is misinterpreting one of the ordinances and the intent of the ordinance, can the council then intervene?
I think, no, I mean, there, there's a reason why we are two separate boards, so if the planning board makes a decision that then essentially, I'm looking to Tim to keep me honest with this, but if the planning board makes the decision, it could essentially be appealed to the town council, which why.
It was on board of appeals.
Sorry, it's on board of appeals. I like, it's on board of appeals.
So town council only handles the personnel. Once you employ a planning board member, the council's statutory authority on those personnel owners. All the ordinance and, and to change ordinances, you have a final authority on changes. Enforcing the ordinances are strictly the board of the planning board of the town of Southbury. If they err, make caution, or people don't like the decisions, that ultimately will be one of the board defeats. Okay, thank you, Mary.
Anyone else here in the evening who wants to speak about the CMP?
My name is Greg Thompson. I'm community relations for something an hour. I was here on Friday. And we first of all appreciate all the feedback that we got. We did not provide a number of answers, and we apologize for that. Part of it was we took away a lot of, a lot of that information to review. And what that caused us to do is we are going to look at a number of the sites that were brought up that evening. Again, in detail to see what it would take, what the issues are, good or bad. I'm not here to like to promise any of them will or won't work, but we need the time to review them. We're going to take that time. So you are going to see us slow down a little bit. You probably won't hear from us for a few weeks while we do that analysis, because it's not a quick thing to review this and put these down, but certainly if you have questions, I am one of the people that answer that number. And we'll certainly do our best to answer, but we do appreciate the feedback. We will take it back. We will look at it. It will come back. But that way, there's a certain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Anyone else? Yeah, you're tied. Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone here who wants to speak about something that's not on the agenda or wasn't CMP? Anyone on the phone? We'll move on to unfinished business number one, High Striker Farm update. Give me a moment to get to the right locations. All right, so this has been an item that's been on our agenda a couple of times over the past few months. Hi, thank you for coming up. I'm just going to provide some context real quick. So at our May twenty seventh meeting of this year, we, we should be, like, the town council voted four zero to grant additional cultivation, cultivation lifens to High Striker Farm. And forgive me, could you please remind me?
Ryan Reed.
Thank you, Ryan. Brian is here. He's the owner of High Striker Farm. The town council, we voted four zero to grant you a conditional cultivation lifens to expire on September ninth. Today is September ninth, pending some odor mitigation solutions, I guess, that you could implement it. And so over the past few months, I know you've, you have been working closely with our code enforcement officer to get that in place, and we do have a letter from the, the butter, who reclaims kind of the original complaintant, I guess, about this, letting us know that the mitigation that she put in place has, she's got it signed into the books and placed. And so I just wanted to provide that context. Is there anything else that I should add or am missing?
No, only that Kenny has called up code enforcement, followed up. She wouldn't be here tonight, so she sent a memo on to yourself and the rest of the council. And just reads that in the past ninety days, the code enforcement officer has not received any complaints regarding High Striker Bob Canvas cultivation. The code enforcement officer did proactively reach out. There are the neighbor residents who had previously submitted odor related complaints or responses included in the attached email correspondence. As there's no outstanding violations of complaints, I recommend writing this license for the expiration date of remaining match. Should say twenty twenty six, go on to the established renewal schedule.
That being said. Well, just.
Yes, good question.
I just haven't, I haven't edited.
Yeah.
On the actual license, that reflects that, that it expires as March twenty 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 five. So is that accurate or does that mean to be added?
No, that, that needs to be March twenty twenty.
Twenty, that's it.
Twenty six.
I used to want to jump on that a little bit.
Oh, Madam Chair, I hope that we grant the license to High Striker Farms with a renewal schedule date of March twenty twenty six.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion?
Thank you for all the hard work.
Good point. Thank you, guys.
You put in a lot of effort. The gentleman you brought with you and what we did, I appreciate it, and I'm sure the neighbor appreciates it, but thank you for taking those steps.
No problem. And I'd like to say, if there is complaints that come up in the future, I'd love to be able to be aware of those. And, and we're going to do our best to mitigate, you know, from here on out, and I think we'll have very little complaint. So, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you so much for working with us. All right, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say ayes, Jeff.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
I. Motion passes for you. All right, moving on to new business. We have a few different liquor licenses renewal. First up, we have a liquor license renewal for the links at Outlook Golf Course.
Madam Chair, I think we, yes, I think we approved the liquor license. The links at Outlook Golf Course, they are just in good standing. There's been no complaints from the leash chief or anybody else.
Second, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of renewing the liquor license for links at Outlook, say ayes, Jeff.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
I. Motion passes for you. Up next, we have a special amusement permit for also linked to Outlook.
And the chair, I will be approving the special amusement permit links, permits for links at Outlook, waiving the public hearing as we've done in the past.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of renewing the special amusement permit for links at Outlook, say ayes, Jeff.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
I. Motion passes for you. Okay, and then we have a new liquor license application from Catbird Restaurant, I mean, located downtown. So they have a tie for their new liquor license, and I just want to make sure I'm covering everything, like speaking to everything appropriately, I think, in their initial application. It's question, is it question eight? I just want to explain this a little bit. In, in their new, in, this is a new application for liquor license for Catbird Restaurant. And in, in just interesting for everyone to know is that this licensing form and process has changed a little bit initiated by the state, so what we're seeing now is a little bit different than what we have seen previously. And the Catbird folks responded to, is your license application for vessel?
Oh, no, it's never known.
Number nine.
I'm sorry.
Do you, thank you. Do you have a valid inherent health license issued by the Department of Health and Human Services or the Department of Adult Work? The applicant responded, no, they did not yet have the application in hand. They applied for it, and it was on its way. And so they now have it, have submitted it, we have a copy of it, so we can proceed despite the fact they responded now. And thank you, Ty, and for clarifying that, clarifying that. Okay, so given that, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the new liquor license for Catbird Restaurants to expire in September twenty twenty six.
Sure.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say ayes, Jeff.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
I. Motion passes for you.
The man who looks good.
I know, I'm excited. By the new restaurant. All right, new business number four. Moving on, we've got aquifer math adoption. I'm going to let Tim or Jen kind of explain this one for us a little bit.
Swart asked to dial. This is his project. Come on. Phil's, you know, going all boarding.
All right, thanks for being here.
Hi, guys. Thanks for having me this evening. My name is Sirball Brown. I'm your director of planning and development. As a part of some of the first things I do when I come to a community is make sure that their, sorry, their basic, basic infrastructure is good to go and provisions are being followed. One of the first things I look through is I look through all of the ordinances looking for water and sewer, and those restrictions and making sure that anything that we're doing currently or going forward are being consistent with that. And what I found is that an aquifer protection district map was created some time ago, and it didn't have a date associated with it. It only said that it would be available at the clerk's office. But through the history of time, those maps have been lost, so I reached out to the water district, who then reached out to the state. And those two together recreated the map, and so the map that you see in your your packet is a recreation of the original map of the aquifer petition or protection district. And speaking with our leadership and the attorneys, basically, they said you just need to readopt the map. And so tonight, I'm just asking for you all to basically set a public hearing, so you'll be able to readopt that map. And so what that does, what the aquifer protection district does is, is actually protect your, your sensitive areas of your recharge areas for your aquifers. And so you don't want industrial uses or anything like that poisoning your, your water sources, and so you want these aquifer protection areas, and it's already in the ordinance, and what everything that it does is that you just don't have a map anymore. And so this is what that is, is that it's that recreation of that for adoption.
And you said we need to have a public hearing as far as more than form officially adopt this?
Correct.
Great, okay. Council, any questions for?
The thing they added is just replacement.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought the understanding was that they did have to have a public hearing readoption, but if, if the case is that they don't, I'm, I'm okay with that as well.
I know.
Yeah.
No, that, if you can pass. No, I checked with legal counsel. So where this is just a replacement, you're not doing something new. You can just pass this tonight, and then it goes back on the block.
Right.
If there was, if there was a new update in that, adapt to a whole public hearing, but where it's just a replacement of what was used to be, they can just prove it.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, anybody? All right, thank you, DiCarlo. I will go ahead and make a motion to vote and adopt the aquifer protection zone map included in our first second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say ayes, Jeff.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
Hi.
I. Motion passes for you. DiCarlo, thank you for looking inside and figuring out we have it and getting us, so we did. All right, moving on to number five. This is another. Come on up. So new business number five, Black Party, proposal that closed on Paul Street. I'll kind of let you explain this a little bit. I think we did this similar time last year or sort of.
Sort of. Okay, so what this came up with is that looking around for your fall events, you have your Halloween parade. But I was looking for something very, very small just for the townspeople of the town of Southbury, and to really celebrate, you know, the community, and something that people can come out and, and walk to, and so kids can be in the street, et cetera, et cetera, so you can all have that, the small town feel that everyone talks about again. And so this idea started getting traction with the owners to four and Odd Fellows. When I mentioned it to them, if they would be interested, and they jumped on it. I said, yes, we want to participate. We, we want to be a part of this community. And reaching out to the other neighbors, who was Seacoast Christian School, they also wanted to participate. And in fact, they have their own event that happens yearly around this time. And so this is what you might be thinking of. They already have an event for kids for the broader community, and they want to be more a part of this community. And so talking with them, we asked them, well, should we have it on the same date? And they said, yeah, we'll definitely move it to the date that you're thinking of. And so October twenty fifth started to be that date. And on that day, basically, they'll have blow up castles, they'll have petting zoos, and that's all on a seacoast property. And then what we want to do is just shut a small, small portion of Paul Street on a Saturday, Saturday mornings, and Paul Street parking lot, so we can have this on the street and then convert Paul Street parking lot to what's called a pocket park. And so a demonstration of how you can do this for free or no money, and then use the access that you already have to create something new. And the whole idea of the Paul Street parking lot is basically using some of the materials we already have. So we use turf during the winter time, if you're going down, if you're going down the slope, and they use that to cover their greets, but you can then use that in Paul Street parking lot together with, sorry, Melissa, some of our, at our run at chairs. And together with some of the games that we already have at our, at our centers around for the library and everything to bring games outside, and so kids and families could be out there and enjoy the space and enjoy the work of your downtown area. And talking with the businesses, they're, they're, we're getting really excited about it, and they wanted to do a much bigger event, and I told them, whoa, this is actually for your community members to just come out and enjoy. And so we are, we are requesting the closure of a very, very tiny part of Paul Street and the closure of Paul Street parking lot just for a time. Paul Street parking lot would be closed from noon on Friday to noon on Sunday, so we can set up that, that, that space. But the street would only be closed, I believe, at six A M. on Saturday till like five P M. on Saturday, so just that, that short portion. And working with both of our businesses, Seacoast, you will be able to go down Paul Street and make a U-turn and go back up. And then the businesses for two four, that's also open, so you actually will be able to turn here and go out. And so literally, it's only about three hundred to four hundred feet in, in order to have this event. Yeah.
I'm excited. That sounds. I'm excited, that sounds. I like it.
Yeah.
Any other questions for DiCarlo on this event?
I like it because it's gonna fix an eyesore, as in Paul Street Parking. Um maybe we can get rid of some of the cars that don't have plates and have flat tires and never leave the parking lot. So my suggestion, my only suggestion would be involve Chief Ruder a little bit before ten twenty four at noon. Yeah, to remove those vehicles, but I think it's a fantastic idea and again, it'll uh help us clean that area up and start fresh for the fall also. So nice work, DiCarlo, again.
Thank you, and so we will be talking, we will be working with all of our partners here and with the community themselves. We've already started to do outreach to the whole neighborhood of Paul Street, um and they are pretty excited about it as well. Um so we're really looking at just really low key, really casual for this and we'll see what happens, yeah.
I have a procedural question, can I do this in one motion or just need to be two? Right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the closure of Paul Street on October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five, from six AM to five PM. And to approve the closure of the Paul Street Parking Lot from October twenty fourth at noon until October twenty sixth at noon.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering if we should modify the motion just a little bit because we're making a motion to approve the closure of Paul Street, it makes it sound like we're closing the whole street. But in fact, it's just between the entrances of the stage house two four and the Seacoast Christian School. So I don't know if we need to.
Yeah.
Maybe.
We can amend the motion, where's the?
If you read the first line, it says.
Oh, I understand the danger, okay. Um I'll amend the motion, um he'll bring the closer, owner of Paul Street um between the entrances of the stage house two four um and the Seacoast Christian School on October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five, from six AM to five PM. And to approve the closure of Paul Street Parking Lot from October twenty fourth at noon until October twenty sixth.
Amend it second.
Thank you, um any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John. I motion passes for you. Thank you, DiCarlo.
Thank you, um the last thing I'll say before I get out of here is that if you know these small businesses or home occupations that would like to have a table or a tent out there, please let them know and contact us. Um and so we can get them the space, there's no charge for that, uh which is a big thing in that world. Um just just get them in touch with us so we can plan out this.
Great. Thank you. Alright, uh new finish, sorry, new business number six, EMS project update. Chief Hamel is here this evening to, I assume, to kind of walk us through uh these slides, thank you for being here tonight, chief.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. I'll let you take it off.
Are they on that?
Oh, I am, do you mind?
Make it so we have.
We have.
Oh. So we're about three months into the EMS project, um Tim had asked me to come in and kind of give you guys an update and thought it was a good timing to go over that, um.
Sorry, Nick.
Doing your magic.
I'm doing the magic, we are good.
You can advance it, it's just a thousand. Uh so kind of at a high level, the project team is just myself, our uh Director of EMS, Katie Moore. Uh two of our captains, Rick Schute and Charlie Carver, and we've really kind of tried to divide all the work up between the four of us, each of our strong points. Uh whether it's uh be the training officer on some of the training stuff. Uh of course Katie with a medical background, myself more administrative, um and Charlie doing his stuff as well. I'd be remiss if I did not uh uh acknowledge all the other folks over at Firehouse who have really jumped in with both feet to get this thing off the ground, um eleven of them start EMT class tonight. Um that's a big commitment for the next three months to get to get certified and trained. And then when we come out the back end of that, well, two thirds of our department will be uh certified, so a lot going on there. How we got here, uh this is obviously voted on at the town meeting in May, um pretty much handsleeve. Um there's a lot of new parts in the project, but we can kind of break it down into four buckets. One's the administrative piece, right, that's the licensing and the state work and the the town work, um dealing with the ambulance contract. Uh the equipment, easy part, but it's expensive. Um the personnel is the hiring and onboarding of people and getting our current people up and stuff. And um and then the fourth is making some some tweaks to the facility to make it uh work for a combined service, so that's where we are there. So on the administrative side, you can see uh we did get our new transport license, I recorded that a few months back. Uh we're up and running on medical calls now, um that's a live picture of my desk as of this afternoon. Um we've delegated uh as many of the doobies as we can. Uh we are working on licensing our existing folks and and Katie's really doing a great job of that. Uh working on some of the EMS specific policies, of course, any sort of public safety agencies, a lot of policies and procedures. We have a lot of fire ones, we're adapting and adding uh EMS ones. Um we've been talking, meeting with York Ambulance and having talks about the contract. Um that's all been going on these last few months and I put some kind of percentages to kind of show you we're halfway there, we're almost there, we're not quite there, whatever. Um in the coming months, we'll be working more on the policies. Um our big goal is to get our transport license done before the end of the year and that's kind of the the race right now uh that we're working on. Um but we also need to get our hiring process kind of nailed down because we need to start advertising probably around the holidays. And um start working on those new hiring manuals and stuff like that. Uh the other big parts are getting getting the equipment to do it, right, we have fire trucks, ambulances. Um you guys approved the ambulance purchase from a dunk bed a few weeks ago. They're still waiting on the new one, so we haven't seen it yet, but it's coming, keep telling me. Uh um we have made a lot of the major uh pieces and parts are in motion, um the communication equipment's now been purchased and that's most of it's in, um some of the other electronic stuff, stuff that I thought might be affected by terrorists. We tried to get ordered early, um they were able to give us that stuff in. Um the cardiac monitors, we'll talk about later, that's really the last big piece. Um and then the other miscellaneous equipment, which is all some kind of small dollar stuff. Katie's working on that part. So we're right on track where we need to be, I think, timing wise. Uh the next uh, you know, the next big push again of getting us licensed, so you know, you see from October to December, it's you know, round out that medical supply purchase, um get at least one of the ambulances stocked up and ready for state inspection and get it inspected by the end of October, so it's kind of where we're, kind of where we're aiming. On the personnel side, um again, we have redundant here, but we're about ninety percent through with licensing our current people. I just mentioned the guys at uh folks have entered the class tonight, they'll be done by Christmas. Um and then the third bullet here is something that I actually wasn't planning on originally, but had kind of materialized over the last few months is uh bringing on some on-call EMS only folks, like we have on-call firefighters. Um wasn't really on my radar and for no other reason, I hadn't thought of it, but it was a pretty good idea. And uh we have four so far, including two paramedics who have come on board, who are are active currently, you know, answering calls in the community. So that's a, that's a bonus for us. And then you'll come January, we're we're full on into into getting full-time, you know, the full-time employees hired. So that's really, really the push of getting all the other stuff done now is so that when we hit January, we can focus on the recruitment and hiring and getting that stuff in place. Facilities, we haven't done a lot with, um and honestly, there's really nothing pressing right there at this moment. But again, you know, more towards the first of the year, we'll be looking to to, you know, working on that in a more uh urgent manner. Honestly, we're limited to a lot of what we can do because York's still here, so you can't, you know, bang down walls while we're still sharing, so. Uh but we're trying to do as much as we can on our side to get prepared for that. So just quick recap, you know, some of the wins, we uh we did get our on-transport license, we were able to get a a great used ambulance, really at a bargain uh price, uh when we come up the other end, we'll have, you know, about twenty-three uh licensed EMTs. Uh we have this new on-call EMS company, which has been really helpful. And I guess the part you're probably most excited about, we are uh under budgeted so far, so we're in pretty good shape. Um some of the concerns would be the continued delays of getting the used truck in here. Um the station costs is really the wild card for me, um until we can dig into that a little deeper. So I'm I'm cautiously optimistic on that and in the time crunch to get our state inspection, so. Um I I really want to have that done by the end of this year, so we're really like focusing on that. And then I guess I I would have to uh mention that we are starting to see an increase in assisting the ambulance with the fire department uh because of staffing issues, so it's really another piece of that that's adding to the urgency to get our our plan B up and running sooner rather than later, so. So the next steps would be finish up the uh finish up the contract negotiations, um get cardiac monitors coming, they're a longer downtime item. Um get the new ambulance done and then uh again, ship that focus from equipment to personnel, is what we're working. And then the the third, I guess the fourth piece there is, you know, the what ifs, if we're pressed into service before next July. Go ahead on that.
Great update of the progress and the percentage of them.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't want to give too much or too little, I was hoping for just right, so.
And thank you to everybody you have for the volunteers and steps up because that's incredible, you have eleven starting class.
Mm-hmm.
And the ones you have, I mean, that, if you look around surrounding communities, wherever you guys are doing the station, you do it right.
Yeah, there's seventeen in that class, eleven emerged.
Yeah, that's, that's incredible.
Do you want to have another, I think you have another thing?
Yeah.
What's the update?
Um so on the, what is it? Your at-risk area, what was that?
Uh the at-risk would be not getting the ambulance inspection done in time.
Okay.
And that's really just a timing issue because the the a new service has to be approved by the meeting that's forward and they need monthly, but you say, okay, well, you go monthly, that's great. Except they need the first week of every month, so if we want to be done by the end of December, we really need to be ready by like mid-November to get on the agenda for first release center, so it compresses that.
So that state inspection is not the only, is not what I'm thinking of as getting an ambulance inspected like I'm.
No, well, yeah, so well, it would have to be expected to, but yeah, it's a, you know, they come down to make sure you have all the equipment you're supposed to have, you have everything, you know, everything's operational, I mean, there's a lot of electronics and stuff inside in ambulance like that, so. You know, they come down and check, they expect that on transport as well, and that's literally just an old police cruiser full of medical gear.
Yeah, okay, so the the risk is that you don't have a clear line of sight as to whether you'll be able to get on to the.
Correct, yeah, so, yeah, so it's it's, yeah, they, the risk is we don't get the used truck in time to get it equipped, to get them scheduled to come down, it's kind of a.
It's a month's slip every time you miss.
Exactly.
You lose thirty days every time you miss one.
I will sleep a lot better when it's back into our station, getting where we're able to start putting stuff on it.
And that's just an internal um milestone, that's, well, it's crucial, but it's internal, like it could really could happen in February.
Yeah.
But you.
I don't, I can't function without deadlines, so.
I like this, yeah.
I have deadlines.
My, um then also down to the bottom, uh the recap, right?
Yeah.
So the concerns, um used ambulance delays, I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh you mentioned the station modification, uh that's totally different, right, it's a whole different project.
Yeah.
State inspection time crunch is not really a state inspection fault, it's due to the used ambulance.
Correct, yeah, and and we we've had a pretty open communication with me and MS, I know what's going on there, you know, at the ready to help us whenever we need it, but right, you still need the stuff there to make it work.
And then um missing the twelve thirty-one transport license toll, how is that different than the state inspection time crunch?
So you have to have the inspection, to get on the agenda and send up paperwork in to get approved at the at the board, I think, so it's kind of a three-step.
It seems like a lot of those concerns are all very different, like I don't know.
Okay.
Uh that's when I was looking at, I'm looking at, I'm like, oh, there's a lot of concerns you have here, but it seems like you really only have three major concerns, one has cascading.
And a bunch, you know, there's a few we can control, there's a couple out of our control, right, you gotta let it control and so on.
Excellent, thank you for explaining that, three.
Yeah, not at all.
Yeah, good point.
Do you have an off-the-wall question? Um so is the, um are they still using the ambulance that we are in contract for?
Yes, so they are, they're waiting on their new one to arrive.
So.
Like everything that is in delegates.
Yeah, no, and I'm knocking on wood, I don't want to jinx anything, but it's not uncommon for ambulances to get into accidents when they're what happens if any kind of damage or like occurs, how's that gonna affect us?
It would, it would depend on the severity, uh it's their second run, it's not their primary, so it's basically their backup.
Okay.
Obviously, being a tourist town in the summertime, they're not willing to give up their backup, although, without the other one here, so.
Thankfully, the tourists have gone home, so it'll be slow.
I'm hoping.
I don't would.
Yeah, exactly.
And they don't let in.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions for the chief before we talk about the cardiac monitor? Okay, alright, um tell us about the cardiac monitor.
Sure, so um as part of the project, we we are required to carry in that budget for two new um cardiac monitors. Uh give a real brief overview of what they do in case there's any questions, uh but it's really the the diagnostic tool that's used under every single call. Um the ZKGs, those um everything, blood pressure, pulse, all that sort of stuff. Really, everything, every diagnostic thing that you would do on a patient at an EMS cause originates with the cardiac monitor. Um and really the reason we're here, that tonight is one, they're expensive, two, we need two of them, and uh figured if we have some background in that before I ask for our money.
And this was figured, I mean, this was figured into the original plan anyways, it wasn't in the CIP budget, so it's already been approved.
It's it's in CIP, it's proved, it's uh it's at right about where we were thinking it was gonna be a few dollars under, so everything's in line there. Um just wanted to be sure there weren't any, you know, major questions there before we proceeded.
So because it was built into the budget, because we already approved the budget for this project, there's no action needed from the council this evening to approve, I'm just not seeing a a thing that says.
Yeah, we have to approve.
Do it, I remember.
It's amazing, because, because of the law.
The law.
Because of the law.
Now, Madam Chair, I moved, we approved the purchase of two cardiac monitors for a total of ninety-three thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars in aid with uh CIP that fire funds.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase of two cardiac monitors for our new EMS fire service, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for you. Thank you chief for coming, thanks for the excellent update.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The seals look nice on the truck, chief, thank you.
I knew you'd like that.
Alright, um moving on to new business number seven, polling location update. Um so to kind of provide a little bit of a context and update on, as I think most everyone knows, our last two elections and this past June and November two thousand twenty four, we changed our poll voting location from this location where we're currently sitting to across the street at Central School um in an effort to kind of um deal with the stairwell issue that we have a lot of times on this floor. Um we moved to Central School across the street, we thank the school for being such great partners and allowing us to move there. However, Central School also has some ADA related challenges. Um and I think also from the school district's perspective, it is, I think, I think for us, it's better to to move the polling location to the high school for the ADA, um kind of issue, I guess I would say, as well as parking. Um additionally, I know the school, I think it's a little bit more, um it's a little bit easier for them to accommodate us in the high school versus Central School as well. Is there anything you wanted to add, Tim?
They overall just thought it would be safer to be at the high school um as far as security as well.
So we have, um looks like we got official approval from Secretary of State Sean Bellows um to adopt that new polling location. Um so for the council this evening, it's just a um motion to officially adopt that in polling location. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
So, yeah, um is the school going to be closed that day or or not?
The way that the school explained it to me is that they are going to be closed for the big general elections. Um they said if I'm able to work with them ahead of time, they can talk with their board about closing for the other ones. But as far as right now, it's not. Um they said if I'm able to work with them ahead of time, they can talk with their board about closing for the other ones, but as far as right now, it's not. It's not perceived to be happening, they'll close for November fourth, though, it is already on the calendar for this year.
Was when we get our town election, the school board. The school vote, which was June twelfth. So we had to go over there, and over there, they didn't have. So the problem became, we had needed to have polls, what, eight, seven, seven, something like that? Eight days. So the issue became two things, we couldn't use the entrance for the school, the ADA rent to go in because the school was in the section. So they had, we had to segregate the gymnasium from the school from the kids. Because they had to still conduct schools, we had to, and we didn't have a way to go in to be ADA compliant that day, so we had to build a ramp. Get there, number one, so. The difference is, yes, in November, the thing, the big election, the school closed, be closed, and we have Octobot. And over there, the ADA entrance comes right out to the ground level, you just roll out on the ground level. And the second part is for the um June election for the school election. The gym is completely isolated from the rest of the building, we can just by closing doors isolate everybody, everybody can go in one door. And out the other door without affecting the rest of the school there in sight, so. It was just all around, much better, much safer, um. Much more organized.
More outlets.
What's that?
Said more outlets, I only had two outlets in the central school zone.
Well, that I, if the school is not closed, I tend to disagree with that because that. High school parking lot is packed during the school day. So there's a possibility that we could have voters that are parking out in the extended football field just to have a parking spot. To go and vote, are we gonna have some sort of setup where like we have golf carts or U T Vs?
And so in June, at that point, seniors are gone. Number one, which has takes a lot of the cars out there, there's a senior.
They will be there in November.
No, they won't.
Schools close in November.
This year.
Yes.
Okay, but I think they're like, we don't know if they're planning on closing school every November, only for, only for.
Every November.
Terms and presidential.
So I was told that they'll close every November because that's the general election day for for the na- na- like nation. But as far as June, as far as June, they're gonna keep, they're gonna stay open, but because we have the one-way in, one-way out. Where you will segregate, and they also said that they would help us with the parking accommodations if needed.
They said the seniors won't be here, because by then they're gone. And he said, so that alleviates a lot of the parking area, and that day they can tell their staff and everybody else to park on. That side, and they'll leave the parking lot open near the gym for us, they said.
Yeah, I apologize, that's the source of the communication there, so, no.
They did, they didn't close. For all the November election, they're going to closing, will continue to close.
Thank you, any other questions?
Yeah, one, but.
Yeah.
So does that mean the annual town meeting? Will be at the high school?
Correct.
Fantastic.
Any, all the high schools are official voting location, and so.
Correct.
I just wanna make sure that.
Yes, per our charter, we are to hold our annual town meeting as the same as a state election, so. Yes, the high school will be our new um polling place indefinitely.
There's one, you know, myself, uh the assistant town manager, we went over and we toured that facility with them, they they were more than. Happy and thrilled to help us, and anything we needed, they said, don't, you know, we'll figure it out, we'll we'll push back the dangers, we'll get to this, we'll. They were more than thrilled to have us there, so. It was, it was good to be seen that.
What's gonna happen with, it will stay the uh polling place when we add the new town hall as well?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the new, uh the new polling of, the the new polling location is approved by the state of Maine. To be located at two sixty Dow Highway South, Birmingham.
Done.
Thanks, Trilla, we have a motion in a second, um any discussion? Just appreciate the school district, um and the high school willing to cooperate with us on that.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, can I just add something, I'm sorry, just it's probably important to let the public know that the absentee ballot box, the drop box will remain here. This is the permanent location for that, it is screwed into the ground, it's not moving anywhere.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Um okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. And last, our last order of new business is historic district proposed amendments. So we received a letter from the Chair of the Historic District Commission, Dan Boyle, um to amend um the ordinance. To include the phrase composite material, um and the the specific amendment is included in our support docs. Um because this is a amended amendment to an ordinance, we do have to schedule a public hearing. Um and so um I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, September twenty-third. At six thirty P M on the third floor of Town Hall, uh for the proposed historic district amendment.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Um all those in favor say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. That takes care of all of our business for this evening, and now I will pass it to Tim and Jen to give us the town.
The highway department, um main street sidewalks have been completed, they look nice, got a lot of blue compliments on them. Now working on the sidewalks on all the drive. Uh install new concrete curb on bound gate road by the police department. And also at basketball court for the skating ice rink. We have a little more work to do there, to put the drains in, put a new fence piece up. So that on the back sides, people don't step over the curb to hurt themselves, the fence will protect them from not going over the curb. Um so that's underway, being worked on. Police department had two rescue accidents, seventy-three traffic stops. Um the pump van triathlon Sunday run went well. This weekend, with very few resident complaints, there are no accidents in here throughout the days. The behavioral health specialist has had twenty-one contacts with citizens, four contacts with staff. And six collaborations, including with the Cumberland County Paris Department. Are working with them in Arag, we have the community center on Thursday at nine thirty A M, siding on nine eleven. For assisting them. White Abounds had twelve calls in the last two weeks, three hundred and twenty-nine year to date. Eleven members of siding here in key class, ninth somersworth on on September ninth. Class will run through November, five of them personally continue to provide assistance to local animals crews. As they are storing the staff, be sure it is processed, um we did have. One fly by up for the first time. Um the weekend recall. Was staff able to throw the flying owls and receive the old time from us, so we're gonna build, go cameos back there, because that stumbled in the contract. Uh received administration training on accounting's rave alert system, this is the fight upon fire chief. Rave is a citizen notification system where residents can sign up to receive critical alerts for disasters. Emergencies are on the time, critical information, public outreach campaign will be cited in the coming weeks. Code enforcement, uh three milling permits, two plumbing permits. Six certificate of occupancy, twenty-two inspections and four violations.
Planning and economic development, there are two applications in front of the planning board right now, as we know, C and P, um they're meeting for a sketch. And great works, they have accepted and are. And are reading the at the middle, and they have a site visit, uh very works. Four amendments, uh that are they're gonna be typically at in a workshop, web and protection, boot trunk legalization. Park parking reductions and change of use in the waiver and B one and B two zones. Wayfinding study is ready to to start, design ideas from the downtown revitalization ad hoc committee is competing first. Next week and scheduling a one set. Woman sucks. You're asking for applications for the town with small businesses, grossing over seventy-five thousand a year to participate in anticipate end program. Contact you probably with more details on that. And the coastal bus that runs to town that is gonna be October third will be the last day they run through South Park. The transportation has no updates, so that's always good. Libraries, the August statistics, uh they had two thousand five hundred and one people come through the door, twenty-nine programs, three hundred and ten attendees. And they had three thousand one hundred and seventy-six five bar of those. Recreation department on September second, Jennifer Cherkop started. And the after-school youth programs for math, science, anthropology, and the human coyote club are starting the end of the week or next week. And seniors went to Boston today for the cheesecake factory and a boat toy. Assessing on this, they're gonna be automatically sending out sixty-day extensions for the events. She is allowed to do that by law and must make sure she puts in the time and effort to look at all these different situations. Um you could do another visit to the home and stake that to time needed, being, you have assessments meetings coming. Um for any other one evaluations over thirty thousand, I'm just trying to look at that. There also feel being a lot of calls, um and having in-person people come in with questions about their tax bills. And assessments of their own, their cards. In the town clerk's office, they uh did three hundred and ninety-one vehicle transactions, thirteen vital record transactions. Fourteen inland fishery transactions, no dog licenses, and thirteen rural apps. The clerk's office will be closed tomorrow for training. And they will be closing one hour early on Thursday, the eighteenth, be closing at five, the New York County Town and City Clarks Association meeting. In my area, finance, H R, benefits, and freebie. The tax system has been feeling a lot of calls about the tax bills and helping process payments. Workman's comp insurance renewals have been submitted. The town email addresses are gonna have a change, we're gonna switch from dot E West to dot gov, and that will help us with security and extra protection. That will be happening in about a month from now, our emails will continue to work. Forever, so that's not a problem, you know, we we'll get the notification out there, it'll give us um a little blurb that we can put at the bottom of our emails. To notify people to use the new email the ones who want. Um we have been working, me and Tim and I have been working together doing safety policies, working with Heather. And maxing out all of the different extra safety steps and policies that we can fit into place, so that we can get. An extra percent off on our workman's comp, right now we get five percent off, we're working to get ten percent off. And finally, I think all the documents, reconciliations, spreadsheets, analysis, getting ready for the audit to start on September twenty-second. And at a last time council meeting, there was a public comment that was made suggesting that unused funds should be returned to residents. So I just wanted to take a moment to provide some context, uh information on this matter. Each year, uh we make a concentrated effort to reduce the tax burden of residents by utilizing the funds from the undesigned needed fund balance, but it's financially responsible to do so. This year, we allocated one million three hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars from the undesigned needed fund to lower the tax burden. Additionally, one million three hundred and fifty-one thousand from the same funds will be used to support the town renovation. Hence, reducing the amount you need to go out to bond. Last year was nine hundred thousand dollars used to offset the taxes, the year before that was eight hundred and fifty thousand, and the year before that was seven hundred thousand. So just wanted to make sure that we've got that information out there so that people understand that we are trying to do our best. Um you know, directly apply the funds available for use of taxes and avoiding the additional things. And we always, one here, so.
Under that, then, um I had a meeting last week with Old Point. Management to get a better direction on the path we're going with the renovation. Um we had a weekly meeting with Old Point Chad and Brothers and Lassel, um which staff attended. Are some of our our staff there. Uh we met with the sulfur water district, and we're gonna keep meeting with the sulfur water district quarterly. Very productive meeting, was a great meeting to understand why there were a water shortage. What their master plan is going forward, how to help resolve that, and what we could do to help them with that. Uh so it was good meeting, and very productive, and we're working with them, and 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 the short of it, they they're. Their wells aren't producing enough water, so they got four wells, two old ones that they need to, they could start up. Uh and I don't wanna speak for water, there are two, two new ones that they're looking to get online in the next year. And two older ones that the uh cost factor for. Cleaning the water before it's, you know, put into the public system. It's not as as it used to be filtration, so they're gonna try to get those wells set up on new filter new systems. And hopefully by next year, I have four wells online additional. Uh, that was with me. Uh all staff annual safety training and recertification was done on nine four, our work is calm and I know retraining. Uh still working on Chad and Brothers contract with the lawyers. Hopefully, we'll have a resolve this reconnect. And Southern Main Planning Development Act of Transportation Plan, we're looking for a committee member from the town council. Chair Cook has offered her services, so the rest of the council is in favor of that, there'll be a couple, two or three meetings with. Southern Main Plan Development, they're looking for. Who put on transportation around town. Police Chief Jay, um those folks gonna be in on it, in on that committee. It's just to talk about representation from the town, so. Anything you wanna add on that?
I, I'm happy to do it, if I, if anyone else would.
They're planning on having the meetings in daytime, that's why.
My mindset was a little more complicated.
So some of you wanna take, take time off. Sit down, talk about buses go round and round. What's that?
I found here, but I might not be here in two months.
You can throw it to me, guys.
I'm assuming I was the one with me.
Oh, yeah. That's all I have, and I'm treated as also, thank you.
Thank you very much, um anyone have any questions for Tim and Jen? And will do have some comments, Ken?
Uh I do have one question, I was looking back. We had. That time with the identification committee, were they not supposed to come present their bylaws to us?
Oh, yes, that that's right, that's my fault, I I have been so busy.
Oh, it's okay.
I haven't followed up with them, DeKalb did say he had them, I had the conversation with DeKalb, then it slipped through the cracks, I apologize, it's my fault.
No, 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 I'll, I'll get it, I just wanted to make sure I didn't have a senior moment to get it, I'm sorry.
I did. So bear with me, I, a whole lot of their fault, guys, we had that conversation, DeKalb said, yeah, they're ready to go, I said, great. And I moved on to that mountain of things, so.
Appreciate it.
I'll take it, you can make a note, we get them on the next. Would you, please?
Thank you. Uh that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Ken?
No, not this one, thank you.
Just to put more on Tyann's plate, um with changing the polling station. Um I know that some people that are seeking election, there are rules to electioneering and places. Where there would be, I imagine, where the distance of the school to the road that on some part of the property, people might be able to. Fly wave or meet and greet, um will there be any kind of like map directing those folks to where they can and cannot stand, if at all?
Yes, um I will be updating that map from what we had for previous times for Central School. However, one of the maps um outlines that remains the same is that we do still conduct absentee ballot, um absentee voting here in the office. So it makes us a additional polling place, so that two hundred and fifty foot um rule still applies to here. Um otherwise, I do have a sign etiquette um guidelines sheet that I've been giving um to. Um our nominees, nominees, candidates, they, um but I can happily post that as well. Gives you more information.
All right, and I have nothing this evening, um.
Mad Chair, move to your chair.
Second, all those in favor say aye, we are. Thank you all for being here tonight.